Hello and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley, joined today by founder of Get Oiling Greg Kilian. Hey Greg.
Hello everyone, really glad to be here today.
We are lucky to have Greg here because he has been so busy. I don't know if you guys have been seeing all the cool little feature updates that have been popping up in your system, just nice little improvements and tweaks here and there. We also have Colin and Julie here with us today. Hi guys.
Hi everyone.
How you doing everyone?
And hello to you. Welcome everybody. Say hi in the comments. Let us know where you're coming in from. We're thrilled to have you here. We meet every week on Thursdays at noon US Eastern Time unless it's a holiday. We so appreciate being able to be a part of your brand partner journey. Everyone here is someone who uses and loves Young Living too. This platform that you have here with Get Oiling is built for your brand partner business to be able to share, to be able to get yourself out there so that you attract leads to you and so much more. And actually, we're going to be talking about that today, very specifically, how you can use a feature in Get Oiling to start attracting people to you who are interested to hear what you have to say and who want to learn more, who will eventually become your next great customers. All right, so today we're going to talk about blogging and we're going to talk about how you can blog with Get Oiling and some best practices to do so. So before we get into that, again, go ahead, get into the chat, say hello. We're going to pop out a video and we will come back and join you after we have been through today's training. All right. Again, really excited to have you guys here today. If you have questions as they're coming in, please do go ahead and pop those into the Q and A so that we don't miss them. Today, we're going to talk about why right now is the time to give your story a real home online and what the difference is between a permanent home and an impermanent one. We'll talk about how a blog builds trust and brings the right people to you. We'll talk about simple ways to start sharing, even if you don't feel like a writer. And of course, as always, live help and Q and A. This is a work session. We are here to work with you together. And if you have questions as we're going through this process, please do add those questions to the Q and A. If you want to join us on a call like this one, even if you are not yet a member of the Get Oiling community, we welcome you. You can go to getoiling.com/weeklyworksession to do so. If you would like to work together on a call like this, if you'd like to use this work session to work on a project that you have in mind, we create space for that. You can actually reserve space on an upcoming Thursday. So if there's something that you're trying to build, edit, modify, or just get some feedback on, you've got an opportunity right here. So do take advantage of this, getoiling.com/web site review. And if you would like to hand off your project to our team to get it done for you, that's an option as well. Getoiling.com/concierge. All right, so let's talk about blogging. Actually, real quick, head over into the chat, let me know. Do you currently blog at all? And if you do, how often do you release content? How often do you publish? All right, so as you're doing that, I'm going to go and talk through why getting started with a blog right now is so important. Oh, twice a week Paula, wow. All right, Cornelia is every week, weekly, excellent. No, but I want to, fantastic. These are all a great place to start. All right, so listen, this is the most important reason why you should be blogging. And I could argue, we all should have been blogging six months ago, is because social media posts are fundamentally impermanent, right? On most platforms, whatever you say when you post today is something that is really only going to do work for you for a few hours at most, right? Now, a blog is going to be able to keep your voice working for you long term, right? This is where we start talking about something I like to call legacy content, stuff that sticks around, right? That represents you for the long run. And there are a couple of things that you can do to create legacy content. Blogging is one of those and it's core to all of the strategies. But another would be podcasting and another still would be long form YouTube videos. All of these are a way for you to really have a library of what you have to say out there in the world for you to be discovered day over day, month over month, year over year, for free, never have to paying for advertising. And despite not having to pay for advertising, you've got people finding you and making their way to you where they can become your customers. So this becomes a really powerful tool, not just for right now, but for years from now, when you want to be able to say that you have people coming to you, right? And that's really what we want to create with this. Now, publishing on your own site is something that's also going to build authority and lets new people find you long after you post. You can have a website and having a website is awesome. I'm sure a lot of us came to Get Oiling because we wanted our own personal website, not just the one that Young Living provides us to share with our special link there, but something that really represents who we are and why we share, right? Who it is that we're speaking to, who we want to bring these oils to. And sure, you can have a website that says some things about you, but if you want to have a website that truly works with depth to create connection with people, to create trust with people, having a blog is going to help you do that more than anything else because it provides space for people to really explore what it is you have to say, right? It creates where a social media profile and even just a basic website would be more shallow. There are depths for them to plumb where you are posting content. So your words, your videos, your podcast episodes and these blog posts and Get Oiling, they've got a permanent home that grows your visibility and trust over time. Now, what this does for your business is that it gives curious people a safe, quiet, no consequence way to learn from you without feeling the pressure of communicating with you. Now, I fully recommend that we be out there in the world prospecting, right? Trying to initiate conversations with people, but people aren't necessarily ready to trust us all the time, right? And what do we do if we want to be able to build trust? Well, we need to be able to build passive ways for people to observe, engage and grow their trust with us so that when we announce the next class that we'll be offering, they feel more confident or more ready and less pressure when they want to go ahead and say yes, or when you go to them and you say, would you like to sit down and discuss your goals together? They are going to feel more confident because again, they've seen more than just the fact that you sell something. They see that you stand for something and they see what you stand for. And if they like what they see, they're going to trust you more, right? So it gently moves them toward taking the next step, joining your list, attending your class, booking a one-on-one. And every one of these posts essentially plants a seed that can turn into conversations and connections for years to come. So what do we talk about when we blog? Because what a blog is, is really just a place for us to write an article and put it on our website. Now, really importantly, our blog posts are not and should not be about Young Living's products. That's what Young Living's blog is about, right? Young Living sells oils, you don't. What we do is we open people's eyes to a new way of living and operating that includes product, right? We're influencing people towards seeing a better future for themselves. That's what we're talking about. We are reaching people where they are, talking about their goals, their challenges, perhaps things that you've experienced on your own journey. And this is not to say that product can or should never come up on blog posts, but they should never be centered on them, right? So what I don't want you to do today is leave here and write a post about thieves. What would be better is for you to write a post about your five favorite scents going into the fall or your five favorite products for greening your home, right? So thinking about how you can approach topics that are interesting to the people that you want to reach, but that aren't just baldly promotional, right? Because we're going to tune people out if we're just promoting stuff. So we're going to share stories, insights, routines, lessons, things that help our audience feel seen and understood by us. And if we do mention Young Living products, we do want to make sure we're using this cool tool that Greg built into Get Oiling. It's called a Leaf Link that's going to help you to get credit for the sale. But please never rely on product links as your strategy. Again, if you really feel like it is appropriate to introduce a product in a post, use a Leaf Link, but understand Young Living and its digital infrastructure, it's not built like Amazon, right? So they're not built to be an affiliate marketing company. The links, the referral links that come from Young Living don't necessarily work 100% of the time, right? So don't lean on this as your primary way to get sales, right? Remember, at the end of the day, you can put your link out there and maybe somebody will buy, but that should never be your primary way of getting people acquainted with and using Young Living products. And then when you keep that product, following what I'm kind of talking about here philosophically, you keep the product in the background or as a supplemental piece of the picture here. The compliance also takes care of itself. See, this is also really important. If you want to be somebody who's out there speaking very candidly about what matters to you, about your views, about your experiences, it's risky to talk about health topics, right? In a published, public way next to Young Living products, right? Because it is very easy to find yourself out of compliance. So if we remove from the front of the curtain, Young Living, Young Living remains something that is a tool that we use to support our people behind the curtain, right? Behind the curtain is kitchen table conversations. If what you put in front of the curtain doesn't talk about Young Living, you could talk about whatever you want, right? So do keep that in mind. And obviously, I am not the authority on compliance. If you have any questions about compliance, be sure to reach out to corporate directly. All right, so your blog at the end of the day is more than words. You can use this to feature short videos, to embed podcast episodes or replays from your events. So don't think about this as just being limited to writing a whole lot of stuff. You can simply create a YouTube video, have a quick description of that, put that into a blog post and embed the video. And now you've got a place to get backlinks to your site because it's maybe in your YouTube description. A lot of great ways to utilize this. And then you could just be thinking about this blog as your public library of resources and ideas, something that's easy to share, easy to repurpose and some best practices for great posts. First things first, really do make sure that you're writing for people and not for algorithms. And this is for anybody who is maybe familiar with SEO as a concept. And we're not really going to be getting into SEO and optimizing posts for search in this particular training. We have done some in the past and I would hold that those are still valid if you want to take a look at those. Everything that's taught in our SEO trainings, I believe, are still valid today. But what we want to do here is just really be authentic, make sure that we're being authentic in what we have to say. I'm going to be showing you how to use AI to help generate your posts today, but I really want to strongly encourage you to look at what I show you today as a baseline. And you really want to make sure that what you're putting out there really does sound like you. I highly recommend writing like you speak, right? And using words that are authentic to you and of course, that are important to the people that you want to speak to. We want to aim for a minimum of a thousand words. Again, if you're someone who is interested in optimizing your post for SEO, 2,000 or more words is actually even more optimal. 2,000, 2,500, it's just more similar to say like an academic paper, which is what Google was built to prioritize, right? So longer can tend to mean greater value in the SEO algorithms. You want to use headlines, short paragraphs and images that make reading easy, right? So really long paragraphs should have breaks inside of them, right? I even really like, because a lot of people read on mobile, I will often break after one or sometimes two sentences, depending on what's being said, just so that as the eye is going down the screen, as we're scrolling through, it doesn't feel like work. Have you guys ever felt that, by the way? Right? Have you ever, you've come upon a bit of information and the paragraph is massive and you are bored and switch over to something else after about two seconds? I know that this happens for you because this is what happens to everybody. And this is why social media is such an addictive problem, because there's so many things that are, that are popping up all the time and it kind of keeps that part of our brain engaged. We are, as a species, no longer really engaged for that kind of heavy focus. So it is really important that if you are writing something of length, that you are formatting it in such a way that it is easy for the eye to not jump away. So again, creating space and sort of creating alternating punctuation, not punctuation, sorry, formatting. So like a headline versus paragraph formatting. I'll show you how to do that in just a bit. It does really make it easier to scan and find what you're looking for. And then you want to end with, or somewhere inside of your post, you want to include a clear next step, right? So that might be to sign up for my weekly wellness tips or, you know, peruse and sign up for one of my upcoming events or schedule a one-on-one with me, right? Another thing that's really critically important about blogging is that it needs to be done consistently if you really want to get the benefit of it. So if you are in a season of your life right now where it just feels like too much, try just starting out with once a month and keep that rhythm, right? Because essentially what we're looking for is to build expectation in others, right? Where they're looking forward to having a habit of us, of following what we have to say, right? So pick a rhythm that you can keep, maybe monthly, twice a month or weekly. And then every time you post, make sure that you're telling the world that you did, right? So send a message out to your email list, you know, post about it on social several times, promote it. And remember, this is something you continue to do. So if you're talking about evening routines and something comes up, you know, maybe there is some kind of current event or something is trending, you can say, hey, by the way, I wrote this post a little while back. Maybe you can incorporate this and maybe people are talking about melatonin and you talk about in your post, why melatonin maybe isn't the best move. And there's this really cool thing that you use called deep night essence that helps you to sleep, right? So people start expecting to hear from you. And that steady rhythm of showing up consistently is what's going to build reliable engagement. We all want more engagement, whether that's from our audience at large or even our customer base. And the only way that we can build reliable engagement is by showing up consistently and showing up consistently in a way that you own, right? You could show up and post on social every day and no matter how big your following is or how much edge rank you might have on whatever platform you're on, you will not reach 100% of the people that follow you every time you post. But if those people are on your email list and you email them from Get Oiling, you will reach every one of those inboxes every time you email, right? So you want to make sure that you are really utilizing this as a way to pull people off of social platforms onto your list where you can begin building this pattern of engagement where people can expect to hear from you, love to hear from you, and then of course, move ahead with you. Fonda says except for Hotmail and Outlook. I hear you. It's not 100% for some platforms. Some people still use AOL, I know. All right, progress over perfection. This is really critical as well. Blogs are unlike social posts where, you know, if you say it wrong, people saw it already. With blogs, you can go back and modify these, right? All of this is editable. And the best time to have gotten started with blogging, if you decide today, I really should get started with this, the best time to have started was six months ago. The second best time is right now, right? Because the benefits that you reap from doing this consistently will show up in your business after a few months, right? Sometimes it's even more apparent than that, right? Because having published work that you're putting on social, that you have on your website, that's going to boost your credibility with people who are weighing whether or not to engage with you on a one-on-one basis or to come to your events, right? So these types of things do actually help sooner rather than later, but the greatest benefit of creating content like this is a longer term thing, right? So that's, you know, your ability to have leads and to build an audience that you don't have to pay for with ads for years and years to come. And the cool thing is, is that with these blog posts, it's not like I'm telling you that you have a life sentence of publishing something every week. After a year, you may choose to take one of your top performing blog posts and republish it, right? Go back and edit it for, you know, if you wrote it in 2024, you can update it for 2025 and publish it again, right? So it's not necessarily about creating something brand new every week. It really can be about refreshing some of your best stuff. And what matters the most at the end of the day is showing up regularly and letting your voice grow stronger over time with the people that need to hear what you have to say. Now, we do have Write With AI built into Get Oiling. There are also fantastic paid AI services. Claude in particular is a great AI writer. I use ChatGPT because I like for AI to do a little bit more than that for me. I actually would like to have it write for me and also spit out the code that I could paste the code straight in. It's, if we have some time and you guys really want to see it, I'll show you how I do it. Let me know if that's the case here. It's a little bit advanced. But there is a cool thing. I'm going to show you how to do this in Get Oiling. You can't technically do this in Get Oiling, just not necessarily, I think, to the length that I do with my longer posts that I make with ChatGPT. But what I want you to do is, before we get started, make sure that you have gone into your AI settings inside of Get Oiling and modify it so it is writing in your voice. And if you haven't done this yet and you're unclear of what to put there, I will show you where to go to get not only a training, but a sort of example prompt that you can start with, that we did fairly recently, that you can use to modify it so it sounds like you. You could also use Write With AI to brainstorm your blog ideas, your headlines or outlines before you write. And then you could also, of course, let it help with the editing, but do make sure that your heart and your story take the lead in this content. All right? So let's get started. First thing we want to do is pick a topic that we can write about this week. So this would be something that we maybe already talk about with customers or with our audience. And then plan to post it on your Get Oiling blog. We'll add a simple image and then we'll email your list once it's live. All right, so before I start getting into the demo of this, let me come over here and check out our questions. And then I can head over and show you guys. All right, so Cornelia says, you mentioned once that you can set up automatic answering when someone is commenting. I would like to offer them when commenting to join my weekly wellness tips, my lead magnet or else, how would I do that? Okay, yeah, so there is a setup for this. I haven't done this in a long time, but I will, we're going to check that out. Yes. Let's see, Allison says, is there a difference between these files, monthly blog planning checklist, monthly blog publishing checklist, plan, publish, grow? So monthly blog planning is just the planning, right? That corresponds with that training. So basically what that one is looking at, Allison, is going through and deciding all the things you're going to write about that month, all the emails you're going to send, or actually, that's the blog one. Yeah, so it's, planning is getting it all into your Trello board and publishing is getting it all into Get Oiling. So the plan, publish, grow is more or less a combined version of those two things. And those were just for the different trainings, right? So when we do a, like a quarterly session, a plan, publish, grow session, we are kind of talking about planning and publishing. So I do include those both in this checklist. All right, what are the different AI programs I use? How do you get Good Oil Links AI Voice to activate? Yeah, all right, so let me go and show you guys that first because that's the most important thing that you need to know is if you really want to have AI speak on your behalf, right? If you want it to sound like you, you want to make sure that your AI is actually trained to sound like you. And we did do a training here. I'm just going to try to adjust my resolution here. Here we go. Okay, so we did do a training recently. And I'll come over here and put in AI and see if we can find that. Here we go, how to train your AI. All right, I actually have here, it's in our blog post. I'm going to put our blog post here into the chat so you guys can see this. And I'll make sure that this is in our description as well when we post this. So this is where you want to get started. And essentially what we're doing here, I'll show you the cheat sheet. Essentially what you're doing is you are giving it rules. And then here, let me show you. Okay, so the prompting rule is, you know, to follow audience defaults, specifying if content is for leads or for clients or customers. I talk about it very specifically, not mentioning Young Living or its products in lead-facing content like the blog. So basically what I do here in setting up the AI rules is I tell it what is what and what I want for each type of thing. And I do recommend that you check out this training, grab this cheat sheet, use this as a starting point for how you set up your AI in Get Oiling. So if I come back over here and I click Write With AI and I click Settings, you can see that I actually have that in here. I have a version of that here. All right, so if you have your AI set up, you're going to have better results at the end of the day for your, for whatever it is that you are looking to do. I can also show you really quickly as well. And this is, you know, I do a lot of content and my primary job is not prospecting like yours is, right? So I spend a lot more time writing, so I have a bigger tool for it. So what I do here is I use ChatGPT and I have a project for my content. And inside of here, I have all of these locked in formats. And essentially what these are, are TXT or text files where I give rules for, like the audience and guidelines, what it needs to include, what it shouldn't include and literal examples of finished work to show it, the voice and the format that is correct. I have all of these things in here so that when I come in here and I ask it to create an outline for me, it knows exactly what I want and it can spit that out, right? So if I say, and again, I use this to create training for you guys, but if I were to say, write a blog post about seven ways to grow your Young Living business, I'm going to see it do exactly what I want it to do, more or less. It's, you know, it's about 65, 70% correct. It's going to go through and verify that it's doing all of the things that I want it to do. And let me see, it's actually asking me what I want. Evergreen post. And you do want things to be evergreen. That's another thing that I want to kind of point out to you guys that what you're posting should not be about something that's this week, right? So if you write a blog post, don't write your blog post about this week I have an event where I'm talking about X, Y or Z. Come join it, right? Because that blog post really needs to be something that is evergreen, like evergreen trees, they're always green. We want this post to always be relevant. So you can see here that it's got the title. It has got the sharing description. I've asked it to do this. And then it's actually giving me 1,500 or so published words. And you can see how it's this H2 and this P. This is a header and this is paragraph. So again, I've told it to do this. I can now copy the body of this and I'm just going to go ahead and do this. I'm going to copy the body of this. And for those of you who have code editing available to you in your Get Oiling account, this is your secret to publishing blog posts very quickly. I can come over here to write post and switch over to code view and paste in what it just gave me. And you can see how nicely formatted that is, which is pretty cool, right? And I can actually, I'm going to go back over and just grab everything else that it gave me. And you can get Write With AI and Get Oiling to do this. It's just not going to be as long, right? Especially if you're going to be using code. So again, if you're, you know, trying to publish 2,000, 2,500 word blog posts, I would be using a paid tool for something like that. But here, I just come right down over here, give myself an excerpt and a meta description, give it a category. I'm going to call this one business. I need to create a file, an image for this. So I'm going to pop over to Canva and do this. And I've actually got a template that I can use for a blog post. And it really is so fast. If you, yeah, if it's pre-coded, it's just incredible. All right, let me find one of my designs that's ready for the blog. Here we go. All right, this one is going to be seven ways to grow Young Living. And obviously, you're not going to be writing about this, but that's just what my, what mine is tuned to. Just to be able to get some expediency going here. So if I already have this more or less ready, we pull in. There we go. I'm going to go ahead and download that image. And you guys can see just how quickly this can all come together. All right, I've got that there. I can come back over to my post and add an image. Clearly been doing a lot in here recently. What was that called? Template, copy of template. Actually, there it is. Perfect. Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and publish this now so that you can see what this looks like. This is, the blog is branded here. I'll show you guys how to do that in just a minute, but you can see here's the title of the post. There is our featured image. And you could see that I've got some calls to action that are built in here. So I'm offering a couple of things. This is join the weekly work session. So what you could do there is maybe offer your weekly wellness tips. Maybe here you could offer a link to a discovery call with you, which would be pretty cool. So build real relationships, share stories that resonate. So yeah, you can see how this is all formatted pretty nicely. None of the paragraphs are particularly long. I'm reiterating my calls to action with links there. And I've got a blog footer here as well, and I will go and show you how to set that up. But you guys saw how quickly, because I did some pre-work with AI, how quickly I was able to pull together a post that's 1,500 words, right? So this is doable. You do, of course, want to make sure that you're going back through, making sure it sounds like you, et cetera, right? But going from, you know, some words, an image, if you've got some templates together. But going from, you know, some, some words, an image, if you've got some templates together. And, and then of course into a published post here is, can actually be really quick, right? So if I come back over here, you know, on your website, by the way, if you go to your, your GetOiling website slash blog. You can actually see all of the posts that you've made. And if you're following the same steps like what I just did, where you've got a featured image, you've got an excerpt. Then it's going to look really nice. I actually quite like what you see on the GetOiling blog. Here, let me see if I can pull this up over here so I can show you. If you go to look at the GetOiling blog, it is very, very similar, right? If I go just to the whole list. Everything that we're posting, do you see how consistent this is? Obviously these thumbnails are boring, but that's okay. You could have a little bit more variety for you, but everything is really streamlined, right? So I've got a, a nice little blurb here. I've got an image and when I open up, oops, that's just the image itself. When I open this up. You can see, and you can see where this formatting is coming from. We're offering a trial, we're offering something for free. So that's like our weekly work session. And then you can see everything coming together right here, right? So this, and you can embed video, which we always do as well. All right, so let me come back over here to set up our blog so you guys can see more. So if we go back to, to Jane's blog. You can see that she's got this nice, large image here up top. She's got some sidebar stuff here that actually goes over to offer her habit guide. So she's got a lead magnet that she's offering from here. And down here at the bottom of her post, you can see that she is offering weekly tips. There's her weekly wellness tips. And that we don't even have to include in the blog content itself. You also can have a footer that you add to your blog posts. And you can have a footer at the bottom of the blog digest as well. So let's take a look at that. If we go to our blog, and this is available in all plan levels and GetOiling, by the way, these blogs. You can go to personalized blog. You can name your blog like Jane has done here. You can see up at the top, it says. Actually, I've got to go back to her blog digest and you can see it says the happy holistic blog. Right there, right? So that's where that shows up. Here under header footer and sidebar, this is where you can add an image. And this is just going to show up at the top of your list of posts as well as at the top of every individual post. Right? So remember, this is your list of posts. And I keep clicking the images. And then this is an individual post, so you can still see that it's in both places. I used it for this one. I used the blog banner. Image setting in Canva. So if I, you go to create in Canva and you type in blog banner. That is the preset here, twenty-two forty by twelve sixty. And there are even some great templates there, which I'm pretty sure I used for this. So blog banner templates, yeah, check that out. Lot of cool stuff in there. So that is what I used for this image here. And I just have the image there, nothing else. The sidebar, and I'll show you again where that is. That's this right here. I just popped an image in here. All of this is centered. And then a brief little bit, and I would argue that this might even be a little bit long. Do you see how long this looks here? Right? I might even recommend making that a little bit shorter, a little bit more compelling. Because what we want to do is make sure that they are clicking through to get that habit guide if they're really interested in it. You remember what I said before, you look at a big chunk of text. And if it looks like this, you might not want to read the whole thing because it feels like work, right? We want to remember that's what's happening in people's brains when they're seeing what we're writing. All right, and then we have a blog page footer. So this is down at the bottom of the entire list of blogs. So if you scroll all the way bottom to the bottom of all of these. You can see that I keep this right here. So she's offering a community and this is at the bottom of the, the list of blog posts. And then on the individual post footers, this is where we can include a space for our lead magnet. So what I did here was I offered the weekly wellness tips. Right? So I said, love what you read here, get my weekly tips. And this is a button that goes to. The weekly wellness tips. So this is a great thing for you to put in here. And if you put this here, then you can easily. Make sure no matter what you put in your post, know that this is always going to show up as an option for people, right? If they scroll all the way to the bottom. Now down here, I did put some social links in. If you have something like this in your footer already, it's not really super necessary. But if you wanted to create something like this, all you really need to do is, is just add some images here. And I'll actually show you, I should have. Oh, well, here we go. I've got a few here. So here's a Facebook one. Do we see how that just loads to the center and it's gigantic? I'm going to change the size at maybe half, see if I like it. Nope, still smaller. Let's half that again. I'm going to say that that's okay for now. I might even go down to fifty. But importantly, we're going to display this in line. And then we're going to hit space and repeat the process. Go insert, insert image. Go and find your image. Make that the same size. Set it to be in line. And then we can go and give these an alternate text. Always use an alternate text if you're using images. So maybe this is a Facebook group. And this is Instagram. And then you want to go in and link these. So here I would go to my Facebook group. And here I would go to my Instagram. Right? And you could continue, right? So just remember when you're uploading the image, use this setting right here to display this in line. And that's actually how I got all of these to sit nicely next to each other. And of course you'll be able to see them at the bottom of the post. And they would show up at the bottom of every post, no matter what. So you only have to do this once and it will stay there. Right? Pretty, pretty cool. Now, the, the, do I want to have people? When they comment, do I want to actually choose how I respond to them? That's this right here, Cornelio. So if someone comments on your blog, you may wish to send a particular type of message to them, right? What you would do with that is you would create a campaign, attach that to an automation, you put the automation right here, right? So maybe you want to say something very specific to somebody that's chosen to engage on your blog post. So you would maybe write a message that says, thank you so much for taking the time to leave me a comment on my blog. I love hearing from the community. I promise I'll be back with you as quickly as possible, right? And you just put that into a campaign, put that campaign into an automation and attach it right here. And that's what that would look like. And I really like that. Because it means that you aren't losing that valuable engagement. If somebody thinks enough about what you have to say that they leave a comment, you want to make sure that you're responsive to that. And that's as true about your social as it is about your blog post, as it is about somebody who responds to an email that you send out through GetOiling. All right, Annalee says, what is the name of the app you mentioned a few weeks ago? That, that's like a phone business card. Like a phone business card. I don't know that I recall an app, but I did talk a little bit back about creating a, a contact card. That you could put into your file section. So here, let me come over here and show you. It's like a, a VCF, I think. Yeah, like right here, this VCF right here. This is going to be basically the same as the, the contact card that you have in your smartphone, right? Or in a contacts app. That's going to be a place for you to. Share your email address, your phone number, your website links, et cetera. All right, so Annalee asks a really good question here that I think is, is definitely worth us exploring. And I want to talk through this with you guys. And then I want to actually show you something cool that Greg added to the system this week. And also show you how you can use that, not necessarily for today's purposes. But it is something that does relate to your lead generation. So how do people find these posts? Number one, when you post, you're actively sharing. Right? So when you post, you're providing an invitation for people to come and read this. And this is an invitation for people that you already know and that you are already connected with. So this is your social network. These are people who are on your email list, who are in your GetOiling contact manager. So those, that's going to be the first line of people is basically the warm leads. Now beyond that, there are a lot of other ways to get your posts found. And this kind of gets into SEO training, which we're not really going to focus on today because it really deserves its own space. And by the way, we do have several, one basic and one slightly more advanced SEO training that we did a couple of years ago. And the standards for that and what works to that end haven't changed. So we haven't really touched or updated that yet. So if you look for SEO, if you go into the Success Academy to. Live trainings and replays and you search S E O, you'll be able to find those trainings and learn more about that. But essentially, what that is, SEO, search engine optimization, is you. Setting up your blog in such a way that the search engines like Google, for instance. Are going to prioritize putting you in front of people who are searching for particular things, right? And so this kind of goes into the psychology of what you choose to write about. So one of the things I talked about today in, in the training slides. Is that we want to make sure that we're reaching people where they are, right? So what are they up in the middle of the night Googling? Because who is not, you know, if you're worried about something on your phone in bed when you can't sleep. Searching for things that might help you solve a problem, right? Now, when we search for things, we want to find something that gives us an answer that we're looking for, right? And the reason why you follow certain practices and create a blog post, and again, you don't need to know all of these. You just need to get started. You can make the ones that you wrote before better, right? So my goal today is to give you the confidence to just get started. But once you've gotten started, you can be in the practice of going back and modifying and improving the things that you've already done. And treating those like something new, right? And the things that you're going to be doing there are, you know, using the title. And the, the link path and the H or the, the title is going to be H one or heading one. But the H two or heading to headers, like making sure that you have keywords that people are going to be searching for in those places. That you're using other logically related terms to what that person is looking for throughout the text. Making sure that it has enough length to be considered substantive. That maybe it is content rich, so it has a video embedded or a podcast link. So all of these are things that can really level up what you have there. So that you have a higher and higher chance of being delivered in the search results. And so that is an end goal, right? A long-term, very desirable end goal. But that's not our goal today, because in order to even get close to something like that. We got to get consistent enough for people that are even around us right now to pay attention. Because one of the things that plays a role into whether more people see what you do is that. Whether people engage with it at all, once you put it out, right? So there is a benefit to really making sure that the visibility becomes sort of like a snowball, right? And you have to give an initial push and that's why the audience that you already have access to is going to be the best first place to go. From there, once you start publishing on a consistent basis, you can start going to places in your community that have their own audiences. And now you're showing up a little differently, a little bit more professionally. You could go to a chiropractor and say, you know, hey, I'm a wellness enthusiast, I teach classes and I blog about these topics, right? So instead of just going to them with none of those things and saying, hey, can I teach a class at your place? You could say, hey chiropractor, I teach about these three topics and I blog about them too. Here's my website. Can I teach a class at your place? This becomes a much easier conversation for you, right? So this isn't just about being found, it's also about just kind of backing up your credibility. All right, Allison says, can you talk about blog categories? I don't want too many, but I want some. If I've done themes for the month, should that be a category? So let's go back and explore some more of the features of the GetOiling blog so that we can kind of parse this out. So to answer your question. The categories, all this stuff that shows up over here. It can be quite long, right? It can be. And it's totally fine that it is. But you do, you do want to make sure that you are kind of sticking close to your core topics, right? So if you are someone who talks about homeschooling, about work-life balance. And about thirty-minute meals. I don't expect you to only have three categories here. But maybe under those three categories, you might talk about three more each. So maybe you've got like a dozen here and that's perfectly fine. You could wind up with more than that. But what I would encourage you to do is, is to be mindful about the volume. Of, of, of what you're putting out there, right? So if I go back to. Let me see if I can go back to this blog here. And you can see I've got one, two topics here. My God, you know, definitely over a dozen here on our blog. If I go and I look at this content planning workshop. Ooh, I need to fix that. That one actually doesn't have tags on it. Look at that. So this one's got one, two, three. So I, I would hesitate going over like four of them. Because you could get really busy up here to where people don't even see the blog. Because you've got so many category tags. So just, you know, less is more where that's concerned. Deleting the categories would entail just going to the posts that those are on. And deleting those from the post themselves. And if you want to find out which posts are, are tagged that way, you just click on one of these blog categories. And then you can find all of the posts that are related to that. And then in your blog. Manager in your GetOiling, you could just simply go in and here, let me go and pop into the blog post here. You could actually, actually just go in and, and modify those by just X-ing out of them here. And once none of them have it, it will no longer show up there on the homepage. Now, I was talking about your, your formatting, right? And, and modification of, of this so that it's, it's easy to read. But also that is optimized for SEO. So the first thing you should know, and I am kind of talking about SEO a bit, it's kind of hard to talk about blogging without talking at least a little bit about search engine optimization. The title that you use really should be one that if you were searching for an answer for this category of question. That if you saw this in the list of things that Google gave you, you would click it, right? And, and so this is a very important place to, to be very clear about what it is that you have to say. And, and what the benefit is to the reader. And then once you're in here, I really like to start with normal paragraph settings, right? So this is just normal right here. This is normal. And here, this is heading two. Right? And this does play into SEO, because again, what it is telling Google or the search engines. Is that this is well organized content. And, and the way that the content is organized also includes maybe some keywords that would be relevant to the person who's searching, right? So this, I'm still kind of talking about like how your stuff gets found. But, but yeah, so divide here, I would recommend using heading two. Because heading one is going to be this, right? That is this right here. And then this is paragraph and then this is heading two. And then you just want to make sure that you're keeping things nice that way. Another thing you can do, by the way, is if you want to talk about Young Living and you do want to introduce a, a link to a product. What I would do here is I would go to Young Living. To your market. I would go find the product that you know you want to talk about. So maybe here I'm going to talk about Deep Night Essence. Love that. I'm going to click that to open it. I am going to copy this link. I'm also going to grab. Find that. I'm going to grab that image right there. Save this to download. So if I really did feel like I needed to talk about Young Living in a post. I would go ahead and maybe pop an image in here. And maybe I would put it here. Okay. There it is. All right, so it is in the center. Don't love it like that. I'm going to do the same thing that I showed you guys how to do with the socials. And that is to click right here and go in line. And then I would, here I would link this. But before I do, I need to actually create a leaf link. So I'm going to come over here to more miscellaneous. You see this leaf right here? I'm going to click that and paste in Young Living's link to product. Click okay, and there it is. I'm going to edit this link so that the text says shop now. And I'm going to change the style to one of my buttons. I'm also going to hyperlink this image. And put that leaf link in there as well and make sure that it's the same as that leaf one right here. So I'm going to copy that link and link the image too. And because this is an image on a blog post, I'm going to give this a. Alternate text as well. uh, alternate text as well. So when I save that and I publish it or go view it, when I get down to that image, I can click it and it can take me off to Young Living. I could click shop now and it's actually going to take me straight to a link that's going to have the sponsor and enroller ID already there. So if somebody did buy, uh, they have the best chance of buying straight from you. Now really quickly as well, um, this is a quick update and we're gonna do uh, a contextual training with this soon. But if you use pages uh, to uh, onboard clients or to uh, you know, for for forums, let me see if I can find a a landing page that I might have used, maybe for a strategy call. Here we go. Let me show you this real quick. So if I go to view in pages, and this is available at basic and higher plans. Uh, historically, all we can really do here is ask questions, right? And get people to select answers or to input text. There is a very exciting new feature in our lead forms. If you go over to our fields and booking, if I add a field here, uh, we all, we now have file upload. So this isn't necessarily as relevant to like I'm generating leads. But if you are someone who is a practitioner, if you have an agreement that you want someone to upload, if you uh, you know, are expecting someone to maybe add a photo or attach a file, you now have the ability to require a file upload that is, you know, either images, documents, audio, or any type here, which is pretty, pretty cool. So you uh, you now have that as yet another tool, yet another really awesome way to use your Get Oiling system. All right, another question here. Speaking of blog categories, is there a way to delete ones not uh, longer used or needed? Yeah, so that was what I was talking about earlier. If you go and you find the um, the blog posts that you have that contain that tag and you just go in and you remove that tag from them. That as of right now, we don't have a a category manager for the blog like we have the tag manager for your contacts. Uh, although that does sound like a pretty nice wishlist item. But I'll show you if we go to view the blog. If you wanted to uh, maybe retire one of your blog categories or you felt that it was superfluous, didn't need it, uh, you can just simply click on it, find the post that includes it, and it looks like it's just this one. So I can then go into my post here and find the one. And that's the one there. I can then remove that blog category tag and save the post. And then if I go back to my blog, that tag is no longer there, right? So you just want to make sure that, um, oh, thank you. Um, you just want to make sure that that um, tag is removed from any of the posts that it's on. Cool, cool. If you guys have uh, any questions, feel free to go ahead. If you want to raise your hand in chat, we could do that as well. Um, do let me know. Let's see, does Get Oiling have a training on YouTube uploading? I don't specifically, while it is something that I do twice a week, every single week. My recommendation uh, for YouTube, if you are going to be uploading content to YouTube on any consistent basis, and I will preface this with um, my sole experience and sole lane in YouTube is long-form content. Uh, all of this new Tik Tok-y, brain candy, short uh, video stuff, I do not have experience with. Um, in terms of creating, obviously, I think we all consume it. Stuff is awful, it's like drugs. So um, but what what you want to do, and use your AI for this, please, use your AI for this. Come up with an optimized title and an optimized description. And very importantly, if this ties back to a blog post on your website or a page on your website, include that link. One of the most important things you can do to build authority for your website and your brand is to have other big platforms pointing to your website with links, right? And you do that when you have a YouTube channel, right? So we do that. Every single week, we post a YouTube video and instead of just having links to our homepage, they're going to our blog posts, right? And the blog posts have the videos embedded. And so there's this, this great sort of web that's being uh, woven there that's really effective. So what I would do there, Rita, is just think about kind of the main categories you want to show up. And YouTube videos are really just the same as blogs, aside from, well, you can't edit the video once it's there, really. But uh, but the script, the descriptions, the tags, the titles, you could go back and make modifications to all of that, right? So make sure you're saying what you want to say in your video. But however you adjust that, um, you can readjust infinitely. Fail forward. That's it. That's that's my best advice. Uh, all right, uh, let's see, what what else? Um, let's go in and play around with um, with Write With AI really quickly. Because I do want to show you, uh, because I, you know, I showed you guys how I do this very quickly with Chat G P T. And uh, and and full disclosure, I have spent dozens and dozens of hours refining the prompts that I give Chat G P T to be able to give me really good posts in shorter periods of time like that. And it's still right only may maybe seventy percent of the time. Never on the first go, it is still work. Um, but uh, but once you have your AI settings set up, uh, it's really simple to be able to go in and here, I will uh, maybe say um, write an outline for a blog post about um, self-love and positive affirmations. Do not write the post content yet, just propose an outline for one. All right, because I do have, like when I ask it for a blog in the settings, it does know that I want to have it in HTML format, similar to what I do with Chat G P T. Just, so I am very specifically saying, don't do the thing that I normally want you to do. So do remember if it uh, if it is too correct, sometimes it's because of the settings that you provided it. All right, here we go. Title, embracing self-love through positive affirmations. Here's our meta description. Love it. Fabulous. Okay, so I'm going to copy all of this. And now I'm gonna come back up here and say, write a fifteen-hundred-word blog post using the following outline. Now again, because of the AI settings that I have, where I tell it to start with P in brackets to give me a paragraph format and then to use H2 in brackets for my headlines, it is very likely about to give me code. So just know that if you see that, yours is not going to do that unless you tell it to in settings. And the way that I was able to get it to do that, by the way, if I um, let me just get out of some of these tabs. I don't know how some people live in fifty-seven million tabs, it would drive me insane. So what I do is um, I would actually provide an example if you wanted it to give you code, like to write it and give you code in the same output. I would go uh, over here to more miscellaneous to code view. And I would basically say, start the post with this, the first paragraph with this, and each heading with oop, this. You don't need to code, you just need to see what the patterns are and then tell it what patterns to repeat. And you can see that it's actually doing that right here. So I'm gonna go ahead and add this to the editor. Oof, that's so cool. It just, oh my God, that's so neat. Uh, I love it. So uh, you see how quick that was, right? So cool. So you can use Write With AI and Get Oiling, just like I use Chat G P T. It's pretty neat. All right, what size show uh, photos should we have for the sidebar in the blog? I'd had Write With AI give me a blurb about me, but I want to add a small picture. So what, uh, let me actually just show you what I put there because um, I'm pretty sure that the image that I would have used would have been just like a square five hundred by five hundred pixel. Um, but I, it definitely was sized down. So let me go to the personalized blog button. And over here, um, oop, look at that, I don't have alternative text. I have this set to about a hundred pixels. Um, and I think that that looks, I've looked at it on mobile, I've looked at it on desktop. I think that it looks fine there. Uh, and you can see, it could actually be a bit wider. And on mobile, it is going to shrink it down if it if it need, you know, if need be. I just didn't want it to be too big and busy competing with the other images on the page, right? Because we've got this huge image, we've got images here and here and there, right? So I didn't want it to be too loud. I would argue that you could get away with two or even three hundred pixel square here, and I think you'd be fine. Good question. All right, Jackie says, I was able to get Chat G P T to give me the blog content exactly the way I like it, with headings, et cetera, without code. I just say I want the headings in whatever font and size and the body in font and size. Now, the only potential issue with that, Jackie, is that you are copying um, formatted text from uh, software A into software B, right? And you have preset fonts in your system that uh, are the ones that you've chosen. And they may not be identical. If it's working for you, fabulous, congratulations, that's great. If you have a very basic font, like a, like a public access, like a Google one, it could be fine. Um, it is a little safer to have it give you code because then it's going to default to the fonts that you have in your system and you don't risk any issue uh, with fonts uh, reading out uh, the wrong way. How many images ideally in a blog? Jennifer, that's a really good question. Um, I would say as many as the content warrants, right? So you definitely want a featured image because that's gonna look really nice in your blog digest. That's also going to populate when you share on places like social. Um, but you know, a recipe is fundamentally going to have at least ten times more images than a blog that's talking about other stuff, right? So where it's warranted, use them. Um, I would say depending on the length, um, I mean, we typically do about um, between about fifteen-hundred to eighteen-hundred words when we post and we have a video that's in there. And I don't want you to uh, be so overstimulated by the time you get to the video that you don't watch the video. So we choose to not put a bunch of images in, right? But if you're not using video, then images might be a great way to kind of break things up. Uh, you know who I really like to go see what what they're doing? Uh, you guys keep it around any amount of time. Uh, we absolutely love Katinka and the work that she does, but note that this is all in Dutch. Um, so she on a blog post, let's go read this one. She's got nice, big font, very fun images. Uh, she's got, oh, she's even using like nice little, oh, that's cool. Um, so what she's doing in lieu of images is she's actually using a good amount of formatting and also like emojis. Uh, I think this looks really good. There's always a picture of her at the end. It's super cute. And you can see the images are on the side. So she's using one, right? Um, I would say for the length of the post, what she's done there is appropriate. If her post was twice as long, as is often the case where you see people who are dedicated bloggers, you might see two or three times more images. I think at the end of the day, what I would fall back on is whether or not there is utility to it, right? So if you are depicting something, then that's important. If you are showing an important step in a process, that's important. But if it's just superfluous, like, you know, if you're talking about sadness, you really don't need to go find a picture of a lady like this, you know? Like that's, you don't have to do that. It could be in your featured image or something like that. Uh, but um, but yeah, just make sure that it's actually beneficial. Um, because if the person who's reading it's like, okay, but why is that there that's cheesy? Then, you know, you're you're gonna lose credibility. All right, let's see. Allison says, what I love about Get Oiling blogs versus others is that there are no ads and I can't take all the, yes, you can't take all the animated pictures and things. Absolutely, yeah. No, there's, it's so annoying. You know, I, when I first started learning to cook, I was reading blogs, right? Uh, I was learning uh, from food blogs, particularly from people from other parts of the world whose culture that I was learning, and I really love learning about other cultures. Uh, and so I actually really enjoyed, you know, learning about how food was made in this small village in India, right? Those stories are really great, but I think when you're making chicken pot pie, like there's only so much story you really need to tell. Can we just get to the recipe, please? And I feel like most people feel that way. So yeah, and and plus like on the way there, and this is why actually things are written so long now, is because S E O rules say, you know, if it's two thousand words, then that's good. So now everybody's doing two thousand, twenty-five hundred words. And because these are people who are trying to get ad revenue from their blog posts, they gotta put all those ads somewhere. And so the more words they got, the more justification for images. And it just gets really busy and it's loud. And I think people actually like it that you don't have that, if it's, if if it if it helps. All right, uh, how did you create the codes you use so it does the formatting automatically? Okay, I'm gonna show you that real quick and then we're gonna get going. But um, what I did, uh, oh, that's an image, sorry, that's not my screen that I wanted to share. Uh, what I did in my AI settings, I can scroll down to where I put the blog rules. Where did I put that? Oh, here we go. Weekly blog posts are always lead facing at least a thousand published words in HTML format beginning with div. First paragraph always begins with P. Headings always begin with H2 with a blog title and meta description delivered separately from code using S E O keywords, uh, ending with one call to action. So um, so yeah, that's, that's what I did. I said, begin the post with this tag, begin the um, the content, begin the content with this one and do the headings with this one, right? Uh, and and that is, and again, my recommendation would be if you really want to be getting, write it for me, but in HTML format so that it's ready to paste. I would be using a paid tool for that and it's um, it's not necessary for everybody. I just happen to do a lot of this, right? Um, a lot more than I would ask you guys to do. Uh, and so it works for me that way. But the best thing to do is to create a um, like a T X T file, which is a very simple text, plain text file, that actually has a fully formatted example of a post that is correct. So that you can say, here are my rules, here's an example of it done correctly. So it not only has the code, but it has your voice, right? And so that would be, if you if you really want to get into it the way that I was showing you guys here today, uh, then that's what I would do. Annalee asked how to filter all contacts uh, to Utah, in Utah. Um, are our filtering uh, capabilities on our, in our contact manager, can we filter by location?
Yeah, you can base, uh, there's like city matches. And you can, but if you have multiple values, you can commerce, comma separate them like the subcodes.
Got you. Okay. So yeah, what you want to do is go into your contacts and then filter, uh, and then you can start searching that way. Um, all right, uh, Annalee, that hmm, you might want to send a message into support because I don't want to go into your account to do this and like jeopardize the contact information of your people. So yeah, shoot a message over to our team. Collins over here nodding his head, yes. Reach out and we can help you guys with that. All right, really appreciate you guys sticking around. Again, we're so honored to be a part of your journey and uh, we'll see you guys in the Facebook group. In the meantime, we'll be back same time next week. Take care, everybody.